All right, good evening, everyone. Want to welcome you this evening to the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners meeting for the May 18th, 2020. And I welcome those who are in attendance and are audience here this evening, as well as those who are joining us by TV. Our first item on our agenda will be our invocation this evening, and I'll ask Commissioner Mike LaBrosse to lead us in that, and then we'll be, follow that with our pledge of allegiance, and Commissioner Robbie Wilkie will lead us in that.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today with thankful hearts, giving you praise and honor for all the goodness that you have blessed each and every one of us with. We're thankful for the opportunity, as county commissioners, to come and meet and do your business of the county. We're thankful for our citizens, and Lord, of your hand of safety that you've kept on each and every one of us during these difficult times of virus. And Lord, I ask that you be with all those that are sick and afflicted with the virus, or maybe they're just sick at home recovering from other illnesses. Father, be with them in a special way. Father, we ask that a special blessing, of course, in our emergency management, our fire, and our sheriff's department, our health department, our DSS, and all of those men and women that serve our county so tirelessly. Lord, we thank you for them. Now, Father, bless our meeting tonight. We give you honor and glory, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please place the flag, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. And I guess it goes without saying here this evening, but we are adhering to the social distancing guidelines and all of those things with this virus, and so you see us spread out on the podium, as well as our personnel throughout the building, and that's the reason why, and just wanted to make everyone aware of it. So first is the adoption of our agenda this evening, as our county clerk has presented. So what's a pleasure of the board? Well, first, is there any amendments to the agenda?
There are. There are several amendments. Item 8B, the establishment of the Caldwell Rescue District will be removed this evening. Also, originally on the agenda, there was preliminary plat approval in a zoning for a public hearing for Caldwell Timber Partners. That actually will be moved to items for decision, which will be 10B. There's no need for a public hearing in that matter. Also, there's item C to add under items for decision, COVID-19 project ordinance and budget revision. That'll be presented by Dino DiBernardi and Vic Massenheimer, as it relates to some funding from the COVID-19 crisis. Also, item 11H, JCPC member replacement application. That will be moved until June, when you guys traditionally do your appointments. And then there are two additions at the end of the consent agenda. 11K is a budget revision for animal control architecture fees, and then 11L is a budget revision for the sheriff's department to replace a patrol vehicle. I said two, there's actually three. Also, 11M is a resolution to cap the tax levy and a proposed Caldwell Rescue District.
All right. Hearing our, again, our recommendation for our agenda by our clerk, what's a pleasure of the board in adopting this evening's agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept this evening's agenda and its amendments, as the county clerk has presented to us.
Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously. And the first item on our agenda, then, is our recognition of retirees, and I think we have one here this evening. So Debbie Hatton is here, Jeanne Walker and Libby Clark are going to come up and help with this as well, and then I'm going to come over there, and so, again, trying to maintain our social distance, and we're all trying to make this work, so. But you go ahead and explain all the years of service that Ms. Hatton's had with us.
Well, back in 19...
Yeah. When Noah was getting on the...
Debbie has been with the county for 30-plus years. I think it was 31. 31. And she, I was thinking about this morning, and every computer system that the health department has went on since the beginning, the very first one, she helped put it in there, and she's helped with every single computer system since then. And we would not be where we were today in the health department if it not been for her. And she has been a true blessing to the health department. She's going to be just impossible to replace, and if we had 100 more people just like her, we would be at the very top of the top of the top, because she is awesome, and I miss her every day. And she has been a mentor to me ever since I started, and I'm just glad I got to meet her, and I'm glad she was part of the county.
All right. Absolutely.
I just want to echo what Libby says. We're fortunate to have had Debbie and wish her happy years in her retirement.
All right. And so, as is customary these days in our retirees, we give you a timepiece, because time doesn't matter anymore.
That's true.
But it simply says, presented to Debbie A. Hatton, Administrative Assistant for the Caldwell County Health Department, serving from 1989 to 2020. And so, we want to say congratulations, appreciate your years of service, and hope that you enjoy your retirement.
Thank you so much.
So y'all can...
Thank you so much.
Now, would you like a photo? You could stand in the center, and I'll stand and the commissioners...
Well, it's your work here, why not?
Right.
We can all just come back, do one later, when we can all get closer, maybe, but...
Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Appreciate it.
All right. And we also had Sandy Rich, our longtime Board of Elections Executive Director, who has recently retired, and we had her here for recognition tonight as well, but she was unable to make it. And so, if she comes at a later date, we'll certainly do that and entertain that, but just did want to mention that about Ms. Rich, and thank her for her years of service as well. Then, we're moving to our proclamations in recognition of the National Police Week and Older Americans Month, and we have a couple of those proclamations this evening, and I'm going to start with the Older Americans Month. Beverly Rupert, and Beverly's going to come up and read that proclamation.
I won't give a little feedback, too, but I promise I'll be short, okay?
All right.
Every May, the Administration for Community Living leads our nation's observance of Older Americans Month. Older Americans Month was established in 1963 to acknowledge the contributions of past, current, older persons in our country. During the month of May, a formal proclamation is issued asking the county and our nation to acknowledge older adults as vital parts of our community. So I've got the proclamation, I'll read it. Whereas Caldwell County, North Carolina, includes a growing number of older Americans who make countless contributions to our community every day. And whereas Caldwell County is stronger when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to make their mark. And whereas Caldwell County recognizes the importance of the physical, mental, social, and emotional well-being of its citizens. And whereas Caldwell County can support our community members of all ages by promoting independence, inclusion, and participation, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and connecting older adults with opportunities to share their time, experience, and talents. Now, this next part's where y'all accept it, and I'm hoping we're all in agreement to accept that. Now, therefore, we, the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 2020 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to take time this month and recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential members of our community. And I don't know, I don't know if y'all have one.
Yeah, we do. In our agenda, yes, ma'am.
In 2020, the theme for Older Americans Month is Make Your Mark. It was selected to encourage and celebrate contributions that older adults make to our communities. Around the nation, older adults make their mark every day as volunteers, employees, employers, parents, grandparents, advocates. They offer their time, talents, and experience to benefit our communities. The Make Your Mark theme highlights older adults' unique and lasting contributions to our communities. And ways, there are several ways that everybody can help make the mark on the community all year long, not just your older Americans. Volunteer your time, local schools, shelters, food kitchens, stories, share your stories. You know, once we're all gone, our kids and our grandkids, they only know what we tell them, so we need to share those stories. Write a book, assemble a photo album. Get involved in your community and your neighborhood, you know, work at the food bank, help down at Leo's, you know, hold a block party, you know, help organizations plant flowers at their businesses. Those are great things to do in a normal situation, but right now, with this COVID, we're not there. You know, DSS, one of the big things that makes me proud of Caldwell County is every May, for older Americans, we have our celebration of life. This would have been our 50th year, and honestly, we were looking forward to it. We were hoping to do it up a little different, make it more of a bang, since it was the 50, but of course, that got canceled. But we still are able to volunteer and do things. One thing that makes me proud of our agency is we are sending out cards to every resident at every nursing and assisted living facility in the county. You know, people don't get mail that much. They email and they text, but you know, everybody really likes to get a letter, and we thought, you know, they don't, we don't know every one of them, and they don't know us, but you know, that's going to brighten somebody's day. Their family can't come in, so at least they're able to get something from us and know that their county respects them and are thinking of them. We've also are still, you know, we partner with like the senior center. The senior center, they have puzzles available outside for people to come and pick up, and they're also offering a lot of their classes on Zoom. They are, I know one they definitely offer is Zoom yoga, so the, so the members can still participate, they're just not participating there, because it's closed. DSS also offers a variety of service to older adults. You know, we do the guardianship, adult protective services, placement services, special assistance in-home and lifeline, which I'll be back next month, so I'll go more dead about that next month. COVID at times has made it difficult to get the services our clients need, but we're learning new and effective ways to do our job and advocate for our clients, but always making their needs our number one priority. Communities that support and include all their members are stronger. Please join us in strengthening our community. Older Americans Month gives us the opportunity to recognize those older Americans and their contributions.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or anything?
No questions. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, I'll entertain a motion that we adopt, May 2020 as Older Americans Month, and the proclamation that Ms. Rupert read.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adopt the proclamation as Ms. Rupert has presented to us, and again, we'd like to thank our DSS for all they do in assisting our older adults.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries unanimously as well. And then we have another proclamation on our agenda this evening, in recognition of National Police Week, which was actually this past week, May 10th through the 16th, but I'll just quickly go over the highlights of this proclamation. Whereas the Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which May 15th falls is National Police Week. And whereas the members of the Caldwell County Sheriff's Office play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of Caldwell County. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of our sheriff's office, and the members of our sheriff's office recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas the men and women of Caldwell County Sheriff's Office unceasingly provide a vital public service, now therefore be it resolved that the Caldwell County Board of Commissioners calls upon all citizens of Caldwell County and upon all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th through 16th as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observations and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered dedicated service to Caldwell County, and in so doing, have established for themselves an inevitable and enduring reputation of preserving the rights and security of all citizens. And I'll ask for a motion that we adopt that as our proclamation, and again, going forward to recognize our law enforcement as best we can during this pandemic and all this going on with that. So do I hear a motion that we adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the proclamation that you just finished reading.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. And again, we want to thank our law enforcement for all that they do. Major Bean's here with us this evening, and for the sheriff's office, and I know they've had their hands full with this current situation, as well as many others. And I know Ms. Rupert has left the building, but our older Americans and our citizens in our rest homes and facilities are really struggling with this pandemic. And to envision, and I'll just highlight a moment there, that, that people have been quarantined in our rest homes and facilities to a room that's typically six by 12 feet. They're not getting out of their room. They're not able to go into the dining areas. They're not able to assemble the church activities and things that typically goes on there. They're in their rooms and unable to, to get out of that environment. And so, everything that we can do to brighten their day a little bit, I think we should do, and we'll thank, thank you and your staff for sending those cards, and I don't know if we don't need to do it again. I don't know how many that is in Caldwell County, but it certainly would be worth entertaining to let those folks know how much we appreciate them. All right. With that, we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is our public hearing section, and the first one is an ED incentive, and I'm not even going to say that project name, because I'll mess it up, Deborah, so you, you tell it.
Georgia.
Georgia. Yeah, pronounce Georgia, I say, so.
It spelled funny.
With a J.
Yes.
Us country folk don't say Georgia with a J, but that's just me.
Us people from Georgia don't spell it that way either. Well, I'm excited to bring this project to you. It is the largest project that we've ever done, and it's an expansion of a longstanding company in Caldwell County. The company plans to invest $120 million at its current site. They have grown over the years and added facilities throughout their footprint in the United States. There are two states competing with us for this project, and they are states that are well-known for their aggressive campaigns to recruit. And for that reason, we are working very hard with this company to retain them. Now, we're not worried that they're going to leave, we just are concerned that this expansion happen here in our county, rather than move and happen somewhere else. If we win, we get $120 million expansion that will take five years to build out. It will create 111 new jobs. Those jobs pay almost 30% more than our average private sector wage in Caldwell County. That will be a big boost. And the, if we, if we lose it, they will cut 120 jobs that will be moved to another facility. And we, we feel strongly that you would want to know about this. Just to give you an example, the new payroll for just that little bit will be $7.3 million a year, and to maintain the 120 would be $5 million a year. That's, that's a bunch. So we're asking for first confidentiality on this, because we are now in competition to get a state grant that will help push this thing through the finish line, and we didn't have that until this last week, so we've worked hard, we finally got there. We hope that that will be enough, but we're, they are entertaining that now. The governor would announce this project when they schedule it with the company, so we are asking for confidentiality. We're asking for a $2,000 job incentive for the new jobs, a $2,000 a job incentive to retain the 120, and a 10-year, 75% property tax grant for this investment. We've only had one project that's been bigger than this, and that's that little place up on the hill that starts with a G, so this is a pretty big deal.
All right. And so, with Ms. Murray's presentation, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if anyone signed up to speak.
No.
So with that, we will declare the public hearing closed, and then entertain a motion from the board to open up for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the local jobs incentive of $2,000 per job for up to 111 new full-time jobs to be created over a five-year period. A $2,000 per job local jobs retention incentive to preserve 120 existing jobs and a 10-year property tax grant of 75% of the new assessed tax base added to the existing tax base of the selected property.
All right. And hearing the motion, I'll open that up for discussion, if anybody has anything or questions that you would like to ask. And hearing none, I'll call the question then. All in favor of the motion as been presented by Commissioner Wilkie, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. And so, we appreciate you, and ask this company to stay here if they want to. I know we're up against some competition.
They're going to stay. They're just looking at weighing, this is a financial decision.
Right. Well, and, and I don't think that it, I mean, we're in competition with a couple of other states that are very proactive.
Very.
And, and hopefully, North Carolina will help us pull this across the finish line.
We are hoping.
It would be great for Caldwell County if they do. So we're calling on Governor Cooper and his staff to help us.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I may, I may get you on that phone call.
All right. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Our attorney is over there.
In the event I'm drafting the incentives agreement on this, what are the terms of the grant for the retention of the 120 existing jobs? In other words, at what point does the company receive the $2,000 for those jobs? How much longer do they have to stay here?
It's exactly like the three other that we did before.
So they would have to retain it for a year?
So they have to retain them for five years, and then there is a, a schedule as it goes down. We're not changing any of that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lackey. I'm sorry I didn't see you over there for a moment.
Understood. Not in my accustomed ways.
Our social distancing has really moved our staff away from us. Our clerk's sitting way over there somewhere. All right. So next on our agenda is the presentation of our 2021 budget, and our county manager, Mr. Stan Kaiser, as well as Tony Hilton, is here this evening, and to go over how this budget's going to look.
Eric, can you change it to the other slides?
I just want to take the time to thank the department heads, and particularly their staff, who, who spent long hours working on this budget. We do appreciate them, appreciate the folks in, in the finance and HR department, as well as all the department heads. I just want to let you know, this will be a very austere, slim budget this year. We've got a lot of issues facing us. Caldwell County is currently projected to use some fund balance, less than $1 million in fiscal year 19, 2019, 2020, which is this year. The recommended budget for 2020, 2021 includes a balanced appropriation of 8.67 million, which is up 2.2 million from this current fiscal year. Most of this increase is due to lower revenue estimates and automatic cost increases, such as increases in the retirement rate, and we all know what the loss of revenues due to the COVID outbreak. The tax rate, the budget maintains the current, current county-wide property tax rate of 63 cents. To let you know, there are two fire departments that have requested a rate increase. Little River Fire Department has requested to increase their rescue rate, tax rate by three cents. Bethlehem Fire and Rescue has requested to increase their fire tax rate by a penny. To remind you, I've told you, board members, that in a year before revale, we need to hold the tax rate flat. I've always thought that was a good idea. We're doing it in the county this year, and also with the COVID, we just don't know what's going to happen, so this is a year to tighten the belt and just try to preserve what we've Education, the recommended budget maintains the county's commitment to education. Current expense funding is held steady at 14.8 million. The recommended budget continues to fund six new SRO officers to ensure that every school covered by the county has a full-time officer. Funding for CCC and TI has been maintained at the current amount of 3.5 million. Capital outlay has been delayed in this year's budget. We'll just have to wait and see, as the year progresses, what we can afford. Management hopes to reassess capital outlay spending during the new fiscal year. If the economic situation allows, the county may purchase capital during the new fiscal year, but we'll just have to wait and see, particularly where sales tax comes in. Staffing costs, the budget includes no new staff positions and no reclass to existing positions. The county hopes to avoid the need to furlough any employees, but that's something we will look at if necessary. Management will monitor the county's financial health as the new year progresses and make recommendations to the board as needed. Our water fund, the budget for the water fund does not include any increased fees for customers, though some of our, our expenses have gone up for purchase of water. Total revenues in the water fund are set at 3.67 million. The county water fund currently serves over 8,000 customers, and the budget for the water fund includes 916,000 in transfers out to capital project funds to facilitate work on the Cedar Rock Water Tank and the Draco Tank. And remind you, this has no, the water fund has no effect over, on the county budget or, or the tax rate.
Let Eric get my slides up here. Just want to give you a few budget statistics. The general fund budget is recommended at roughly $84.5 million for the new fiscal year. That's down a little bit, about $400,000 from the current fiscal year, which was at 84.9. Spending increases in this budget are limited to the automatic increases, like the retirement rate going up, health insurance costs going up, things we can't control. We've pretty much left out anything that's optional. Budget does not include any new borrowings, no capital outlay loan is included. We typically have a capital outlay loan, but we've not included one, and like Stan had alluded to, if the situation allows, we may go back and do that during the year, if you approve, but right now, we just didn't feel good about doing it. Let's see. Did want to mention the county's debt per... Did want to mention the county's debt per capita remains very low compared to other counties. A lot of counties have a lot more debt than we do per capita, and that's, that's a good thing for us, especially in this situation, is we're not, not burdened as many as some counties. Since we're talking about debt, I felt like I should point that out. This will be in your booklets. These are just some charts. This shows you where we spend the general fund's money. You can see education's the largest one, and then, you know, it breaks out several others. And you can just look at that if you feel like it. Next slide shows you where the revenues come from. You can see the majority of it is property taxes. The departmental revenues, those are things that are generated by the department, like ambulance fees or the grants at DSS and Health. So those are tied directly to the activity that takes place in those departments. You can see our sales tax. And you might want to note, too, we have a pretty large fund balance appropriation this year. We're hoping next year, when the revow numbers come in, it'll be good enough to sort of knock that back, because frankly, it's too high right now to be sustainable over the long term. But we're hoping for good news next year, but have to wait and see. But that's all my slides, and I think we're both hoping any questions or concerns anybody has.
I just want to make one comment, but as many and most of our folks know, but it is worth saying, we have to adopt the budget by July 1 to continue to function as a county. And in these uncertain times with the virus, sales tax, we don't know where it's gonna land, is a lot of the reason that we can't do anything, not do anything. We're just trying to maintain what we've done over the past year. So if folks have a question about that or, or don't understand that, I wanted to make that explanation. We may revisit, as you have said, our capital expenses at mid-year, if that's a possibility. But who knows if this thing's gonna be put to bed by mid-year? We just don't know what's gonna happen. And, but state law says that we have to adopt a budget by July 1 to continue operating. And that's the reason we've gone through all these scenarios. And I want to say I appreciate you guys and your efforts, Stan and Tony, for what you've put together to be able to maintain where we are. And it goes without saying, I think, we never really had a serious conversation about any furloughs or reduction in force because we want to maintain. But if it comes to that, we could have to go down that road at some point. We just don't know. And so, but we are trying to do the best we can and adopt a budget as we're required to do by statute. And so wanted folks to understand and know that, that are watching, tune in. Our news topic could report it that way. And so we appreciate everything that y'all have done and, and the staff as well. Anybody else got anything?
I would just like to say, you know, this budget process goes back several years of how each and every one of us here on this board and on staff have properly managed the taxpayers' money. Because if, if we had not done that, we wouldn't be sitting here today talking about good financial stability. Because I'm hearing a lot of counties around the state, around the nation, that are in big debt, don't know what they're gonna do, furloughing all kinds of employees, and they're just in a mess. We're not in that shape. Why? Because again, each one of these men up here, along with the staff, and every county employee, doesn't matter if they're hourly or salary, they've all done their job. And thank you, thank you, thank you. Because we're able to do something like this and to hold everything tight and not get too far into our fund balance to where we have to make rash decisions. And so I just want to say thank you and job well done.
And I'll echo Commissioner Brose's comments. I think, you know, Tony and Stan and the rest of the staff's done a great job. I think the original conversations that we had was, you guys were calling it a wait-and-see budget. And I think that's a great term. There's a whole lot of wait-and-see going on right now. So I commend you guys for all your hard work and all your time you spent trying to find a way to pull us through this. But also want to take a chance, an opportunity to thank our employees, as Mike did, about all the things you're doing out there right now. It's not going unnoticed. We do truly appreciate all of our staff and employees that are working hard every day. You're showing up, you're going to work. And in some cases, you're putting yourself and your family at risk and especially from law enforcement EMS standpoint, it's greatly appreciated. And again, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful that as we move through this thing towards the, you know, maybe later in the fall, we'll have a chance to take a step back and look. And we're hoping it's not gonna be as bad as it is. If you take a look at Lowe's and Walmart and places like that, we may be surprised, because I'll tell you, it's been really busy over there. So we're just hopeful that, you know, we'll be able to do some things later in the fall. So I don't want you guys to sit there and think we're not thinking about you, because we are. Lot of conversations around our employees and how, and how we're gonna treat the things this year. So I'm very hopeful that come fall, we can take another look and see where we are. So again, thank you guys for all you do and all you have done, and appreciate your hard work, Tony and Stan. Good job.
All right. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
First head.
That moves us then to our items for decision this evening. And the first is a property disposal resolution. Mr. Stan Kizer, our county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This land we obtained, as you know, as part of a land swap with the Board of Education. The county purchased some land in Lower Creek for expansion of the school bus garage in Lower Creek Elementary, and then we swapped it with the schools for three parcels in the southern end of the county. Two of those parcels at 4082 Grace Chapel Road and the adjoining property. We have received what we think is a fair bid from a gentleman, an offer of $350,000 submitted by Joseph Pugh. He has paid the required 5% to the clerk. The clerk is in possession of the check. And we ask that the county commissioners authorize the sale of the property described above through the upset bid procedure as outlined in North Carolina General Statutes 168-269. And if you guys approve, you folks approve this resolution, then this will be put up for upset bid. And there will be, I believe, 10 days, Thomas?
Yes.
10 days that someone can upset the bid. They would have to increase it by $1,000 for the first thousand and then 5% over that. And that, at that point, we could close with Mr. Pugh if no one else made an offer.
All right. So here, the recommendation of our manager was the pleasure of the board in adopting this resolution this evening.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept Mr. Pugh's offer on the property.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries unanimously.
Now, we can still bid this off now.
Yeah. Somebody wants to upset it. All right. Next is a preliminary plat approval for Caldwell Timber Partners. Ms. Shelley Stevens, our planning director, welcome. Long time since we saw you.
It is, yeah. And I'll probably be back next month, so we have a lot of items coming up. So as the commission chair just mentioned, this is a presentation for Phase 3 of Waterfront Club subdivision for potential preliminary plat approval. And this is just an image of the plat, and this contains all three phases. You can see Phase 1 starting on the right-hand side there and working over to Phase 3 on the far left or the western side. And Caldwell Timber Partners is the applicant, and they're the ones that have been working on the subdivision. They are requesting approval of two separate preliminary plats tonight. And again, this is for Phase 3. And there are 99 lots in this phase that is proposed, and those range in size from 1 acre to 35.63 acres. And if you think that Phase 3 is ringing a bell, they did bring a preliminary plat for Phase 3 forward previously. But again, the final plat is when they can sell lots after the final plat is approved. And they do want to make changes, and basically, they're starting over with this separate Phase 3 here. So this will be their new idea for Phase 3. There are fewer lots, and there are some other changes I'm gonna go over as well. But I did review both of these plats with all of the requirements in the subdivision ordinance, which is what, you know, we have to do in order to approve these preliminary plats. And the planning board did the same. And then there was a lot of conversation back and forth with the engineer as he made some corrections and discussed what was going on in the plat changes. And then, once all of the edits were made and everything, the plat now meets all the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. So just to go over the changes between this plat and what was previously approved, they decided to take out several roads. So they are still gonna connect to Goat Farm Road as they were previously, and they do have a DOT permit for that. They have a DOT permit for both entrances. And basically, they took out some of the roads, mostly in the northern part of Phase 3 there. And again, that's because they have bigger lot sizes up there now. And all of these roads will have to be created to DOT standards. And before the final plat is approved, they have to have a professional engineer sign off stating that these roads are to DOT standards so that, you know, they can get their final plat approved and sell lots. And that's a really important factor in subdivisions, so in the creation of subdivisions. And so another change here is they are proposing two hammerheads, which I've had people ask me, what is a hammerhead? It's like a cul-de-sac where you see those two arrows on this plat pointing to Scenic Lane. There are two proposed hammerheads going there, and those are up to fire code. And NC DOT has said that those would be fine with them, and they would consider them to meet their standards. They have that in writing as well, since this isn't something that's typically done. And then the starred lots to the north there of Phase 3, you can see some starred lots. Those lots would not be sold until Scenic Lane is connected, which is on this Slater plat, and those hammerheads are taken away. So what they're gonna do when they create these hammerheads and then not sell those lots, but get final plat approval, is sell the other lots and then work on a culvert that they're fixing right now that's right in between those arrows there. And then, after that situation is completed, they plan to present another final plat in which Scenic Lane is completed and the two hammerheads are gone. And then they want to sell those lots to the north of Phase 3 there, in the northern part of Phase 3 at that time. So it would be two separate final plat approvals, if that makes sense, so that they can sell some lots here outside of the starred lots. And then here, they would connect Scenic Lane and go ahead and finish up selling lots, in theory. And again, they did meet all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, which is what we look at. There's a checklist, and then, you know, we read from the beginning of the subdivision ordinance to the end and discuss all the requirements with them. There is one thing they're working on, however. On page 21 of the subdivision ordinance, there's a statement that systematic numbering is required within a subdivision. And they did at one time have systematic numbering, but since they changed some of the lots, some of the lot numbers are missing. So I ask that they please make a note about the lot numbers that are no longer there so that there's consecutive numbering except for those skipped lots. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna change the lot numbering such that it's all consecutive and in order after the soil scientist that's working on the project is finished and after all their surveying is done because, or their surveyor's looking over some items, because they don't want to confuse people in the process right now. So that's the only outstanding item. And again, it is technically systematic because they have a note, but it's just kind of confusing. So they're gonna make that less confusing for the final plat. And just as a side note for your knowledge, as you're aware from previous presentations, the COG does have a school growth estimation model that they can run to estimate if the whole subdivision were to, to fill out and develop, how many students they believe would be added to the schools in the area. And for Baiton Elementary, they estimate 42 new students, for Hudson Middle, 22, and for South Caldwell High, 28 students. And the planning board's recommendation for both of these preliminary plats was approval.
All right. Anybody got any questions or comments? And let me say my comment, then we'll go. But it sounds like there's a lot of contingency. If one thing's done, something else will occur. And we need to make sure that all of that is clearly laid out somewhere, written down. Not to say that you're going anywhere, but I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, what's gonna happen in six or eight months when they come back? Shelley's decided to start a family and not come back, and then she's the only one that knows what all this, I'm just saying. So we just need to have that somewhere covered.
And I see what you're saying. And the subdivision ordinance does require that all of that be clearly stated. So they do have notes in here about the hammerheads to make that clear about this preliminary plat. It probably sounds more confusing than it actually is. And then they have the lots they're not selling starred, and they're fixing the culvert, which...
And the culvert has been an issue in the past, right?
Exactly.
I mean, we're talking of the same culvert that we talked about months ago that...
Yeah.
And so now they're saying they're gonna repair that culvert, do it right.
Yes.
Once that's done, though, they can sell some additional lots.
Exactly. And that's all written down on these plats. Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
So we just need to, again, make sure that that's followed through correctly. I'm, I'm just restating that fact so everybody remembers that. And then the numbering issue could be a nightmare for our 911 GIS mapping if it's not straightened out correctly, I would think.
Yeah. And they have that in writing as well. So, yeah, every, all the improvements are required to be completed before final plat approval. And as you've seen through the culvert issue, if something is not done per the requirements, then it will be called out and handled and fixed. Yeah.
So I feel better about all that, knowing that you know all that and are taking care of it.
And they haven't requested final plat approval even, like, they're fixing this culvert issue before they ever requested final plat approval.
Right.
So...
So Shelley, one of my questions is, and along Chairman Church's comments and concerns, is that regarding the hammerheads in the next phase, what happens if we have an economic downturn and they decide not to finish that next phase? Where does that leave us?
Well, it's actually the same phase, but they're just gonna sell additional lots. That means that if they did not finish the culvert project, they would not be able to sell these lots that are starred in the northern part of Phase 3. And again, the hammerheads meet fire code per EMS and then per the fire code itself. And DOT has also approved them, which is critical. So if they requested final plat approval, we would have to make sure, a PE would sign off, yes, this does meet all of the requirements of DOT standards, and DOT approves of it and all of that. So we would still require everything we normally do. Yeah, they're just doing it in separate steps.
So if something was to happen and we were not to, they were not to decide, they said, you know what, we're not gonna sell any of these lots in here, economic downturns, well, it's what it is, we're gonna stop right here. So we wouldn't have any, we wouldn't get caught up in any sort of weird-looking situations out there regarding them not moving to the next phase?
Well...
Or is the cul-de-sac the kind of key to the, I mean, not the cul-de-sac, but the culvert? Is that kind of the key to everything?
No, they could finish, in theory, this plat and submit the final plat here and do all the improvements and create the two hammerheads. And if they did that in their final plat and all that was signed off and done correctly to DOT standards, then they could sell all those lots that are not starred.
Okay.
But they couldn't sell the starred lots.
I got you.
Right.
The area to the bottom left in that map, is that part of the Phase 3 that they're looking at now? That would be able to sell, they would be able to sell those lots?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
So what percentage of lots would be sold if they sold everything except for the starred lots?
It looks to me like it would be about 90% if they sold everything but the starred lots, you said?
Yeah.
Because they have 99 lots, and it looks like that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 lots. So I think, yeah, probably about, they could sell 90 lots if they were able to sell. This is assuming people would buy them and everything. But again, they're not allowed to have final plat approval until their utilities are in and a PE has signed off that the roads are done to DOT standards and all of their improvements are complete.
So at 90% sold, would they be able to turn that over to the HOA and not complete the road?
Well, they would have the two hammerhead roads completed no matter what. That's part of the deal. They have to have, all the roads would be completed. It's just two different styles. If they don't sell those top lots and they, you know, don't do this version and they don't sell those top lots, they still have the hammerheads there. They still have the roads completed per fire code and DOT standards, it's just a different design. It's not ideal. I mean, when this was presented to me, I mean, it's not ideal. You know, I would rather them just present a final plat like this, but I guess they want to, it meets all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, and I guess they want to do it this way. But yeah, they would still have to meet all of the road requirements in either, in either situation. It would just look different.
I'm guessing there's a cash flow issue here and they're needing to sell... I'm guessing there's a cash flow issue here, and they're needing to sell some lots to generate some income for additional work.
Yeah. We have a representative here. I don't know if, maybe he knows the answer to that.
I mean, as long as, as long as we're doing it within what your guidance is, but again, I wanna make sure your guidance stays with us through this whole project. As Commissioner Wilkie says, and makes a very valid point, what happens in five years if there's economic downturn and they just walk away?
Yeah.
So, we may not be on this board then. Chances are, we won't be. Some of us won't. So...
Yeah, they can't get that, the key is, they can't get that final plat approval to actually sell lots until those improvements are in and approved by DOT.
And when we say approved to DOT standards, does that mean DOT automatically takes those roads over there?
No, and I don't wanna confuse anybody. They're private roads, and the subdivision ordinance, we added a statement in there, you have to put on the plat who's gonna maintain the roads, and they are gonna require the HOA to maintain the roads. They would be private roads, unless DOT would take them over, but that's rare these days. However, they have to be to DOT standards, and that has to be signed off on by that professional engineer. So...
How many homes are in there completed now?
Do you know exactly how many y'all have in there? I would have to double-check our...
Built or under construction, about 10.
Yeah, I thought there was maybe 12. That was my guess, so... So, we can't control exactly how much of it builds out, no matter what we do, but we can control, when there's final plat approval, whether the improvements are created to the subdivision ordinance. And, that's what we're gonna do, so hopefully it builds out.
And you're comfortable with everything?
Well, you know, my comfort's based strictly on the subdivision ordinance, and yes, it does meet those requirements of the subdivision ordinance, yeah.
All right. So, I'll make a motion that we adopt this preliminary plat, as has been presented by Shelley. Stevens, our planning director, and approved by our planning board, and forward it over to us and open that up for any other discussion or comment you gentlemen may have. Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And have motion carries. So, thank you for all your work and all your efforts, and we appreciate Caldwell Timber Properties and all the bearings that those folks have done with us as well, 'cause this has been a long process. I don't know how long, but it's been a while.
Been a while.
Now, these are the same people that's doing the other side of the road, too, ain't they? Is that progressing some or sort of kind of?
Planning.
Planning.
Yeah, in the planning stage. We haven't received anything about that quite yet. I mean, I've heard about it.
I know, right now, it's not a great time.
How many lots have y'all got sold out there now? Any idea?
All but 10.
All but 10?
Sold one this week and got 2 people coming this week.
Okay, that's a positive thing. We appreciate your hard work and patience out there.
We got 10 more houses that have submitted to start building, so 10 more about to start.
Good.
All right.
Okay, thank you. And if anybody has any questions that they think of, just let me know. I'll be the answer.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thanks.
Next is COVID-19 Project Ordinance and Budget Revision. Dino Devenardi and Mr. Vic Meisenheimer. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening. Have some, I guess you'd call it, positive news for the response and recovery for Coronavirus Relief Fund. So, everybody's heard of the CARES Act, I assume, from the federal government, funding pushed forward to state and local governments and municipalities for aid directly related to the response to COVID-19. Caldwell County is gonna be the beneficiary of 1.587,063 allocations. Are based, one more plug for our census, based on census numbers from 2019. But eligible spending for this is directly related to expenditures incurred to address the COVID-19 pandemic. Funds must be spent on purposes that were not accounted for in the government's most recently approved budget as of March 27, 2020, and must be used for expenditures incurred between March 1 and December 30 of this year. Cannot be used for revenue replacement purposes, although there is money at the state level that is potentially earmarked for that in addition to this funding. So, what we're coming here for, your approval for today is, number one, the county will be receiving this funds, tentatively, within what we are being told, within the next nine days. We submitted our packet today. It's funding that is coming to us regardless of our intent. Then, we present a plan by June 1 on what the intended use of the funds would be, and then that plan can be altered by submission anytime between now and December 30. There are some very specific things that it can and cannot be used for, and we'll obviously forward all that information to you once we get a little more guidance. But two things we're asking for you. Obviously, we want a project to be developed, which Tony's working on, Capital Project would be the title. That way, you're not, you know, it funds, and you can get a little bit more into this, but over two, obviously, we're going in two fiscal years, so the money would be there as a project instead of rolling over into two separate budgets. Is that a pretty? And then, also, as part of this funding would relate to this, pay for it in full, a contract employee to be able to facilitate all of the grants that we have coming forward, all the grants that we anticipate, and then to facilitate the documentation for the purchases. And it is recommended by FEMA that, you know, that we're going through, have a dedicated person identified for this. And this person or people would be able to do this for the entire county. They would answer directly to Tony. They would pre-vet everything. That way, it's all approved funding. Anytime that there is a, an audit on the back end or during the process, I will say that this will not be done by mid-year budget. There's no way, even being optimistic. We're looking at a long-term, unfortunately, pandemic. We hope that this funding, as well as some other grant funding, though, will, and there's no hope to it, this will tremendously impact our ability to respond to and prevent the future spread of, and like I said, I'm just doing it at 30,000-level view, but we're asking you to, obviously, give us the ability to provide this project and identify the line items for that, and then approval for a contract employee. Now, obviously, that employee would be paid out of this fund, so that there won't be local dollars associated with it. And, we're hopeful to initiate that employee through SC LLC, SCS LLC. I'm sure you've all heard of Roland Hammerick is one of the contractees through FEMA. We have a huge group of very capable employees or potential employees to choose from, but these individuals have done this multiple times for state and federal governments, deployed all over the world, literally. And, we're hopeful that this, well, this will take a lot off of the staff. Our time has been dedicated tremendously toward with Jimmy and Tony lately with funding for staffing. We've had to upstaff for this. This person will be able to facilitate all that, get the reimbursement for that, which will obviously decrease, all-inclusively, the county's output of money and expenditures for this. Be able to use this, and then also, at the back end, let's say that we were to spend the 1.5 approved and the state didn't reallocate the other holdback monies, we are then still in the process of being approved for our public assistance through FEMA. So, this money has to be spent first, prior to applying for the FEMA public assistance, which is what we approved for and had planned on submitting. This contract employee would be able to facilitate that as well. So, once the 1.5, if the 1.5 is expended, then we move into the FEMA Assistance Program with public assistance. I know that's very quick and extremely high-level. If you've got specific questions on what can and can't be bought, obviously, we can answer that now.
It's not costing you.
Yeah, it's not costing the county anything at all. Actually, it's a tremendous benefit, and we are, I'm not gonna lie, trying to get on the front end of it, because there's 100 counties and not 100 contract people to choose from. So, person will be working around, we anticipate around 25 hours a week to be able to facilitate the documentation needed to help Tony on the front end, because we would obviously be audited throughout the process, and then at the end, not only with the county's auditors, but state and federal auditors.
Have to provide office space, vehicles, any of that stuff?
Vehicle is either, I don't know if they're company vehicles or, it's part of the contracted rate, and it is reimbursable, and then they will work out of the EOC. And they'll bring all the stuff that they need, and we provide them the desk space or the conference table space in the EOC.
Just an email address.
It is an email address, that's all, that they would have on the county's component.
All right. Anybody else? Questions or comments?
We've done this before on other situations.
We have with floods, and Hurricane Hugo was the last time that I know there was a long-term contract employee, but it has been done multiple times.
Just briefly for me, and I guess for our public, too, but just quickly, an economic impact of what we're experiencing. I mean, we're staffing an EOC 24/7.
So, I'll give you, I can speak from, so, EOC is being staffed 24/7, and we've upstaffed EMS for the reduction in response on the fireside to prevent the potential exposure of as many responders as possible. So, EOC staff's working 24 on, and then many of us are, continue to work in the 8 to 5 in-between. So, most of the staff received somewhere between, I say, most of the EOC staff received somewhere between 80 and 170 hours of overtime last month. The benefit of this funding is, the county gets repaid all that money, and moving forward, the payment comes out of this pot of money rather than departmental budget or general fund. Same thing with upstaffing of the Health Department EMS crews, if it got to the point where law enforcement was needing to upstaff or additional departments needed contract labor, whether that be medical, you know, the state has pre-vetted a lot of medical employees. This fund, funds it on the front end. If the state releases the other, and I don't remember, is it 150 million on the back end for either lost revenue or they push this money forward again for the, you know, next calendar year for the same thing as this, then we continue to function off this money. If we use up this money, a little over 1.5 million that we're gonna get, we then move into public assistance. So, economic impact to the department has, would have been tremendous.
Right, I mean...
I will definitely...
Yeah, and I guess that's what I'm, we're seeing a grant coming, and we're all pleased with that. But we were doing...
We were, yes.
Above and beyond anyway that was impacting us tremendously, and I don't know that people really understand that.
You've had, every day, you're getting, there's had to be additional staffing. We've had a tremendous increase in call volume, and then obviously, with the reduction in response per state and federal guidelines, we've had to upstaff to maintain the level of service. Same thing with the, you know, we've had school nurses and clinic nurses, and I don't, I don't wanna miss anything, but doing additional duties and working 12-hour days as opposed to their 9-hour days or 8-hour days to maintain the testing. This not only pays for that, but it pays for continued decontamination when we open up next Tuesday and we start doing the mandatory decontamination of public areas, especially in government buildings. And this also, you know, we're gonna be able to provide this, this decontamination and other services to the municipalities as well. It provides the funding for all the supplies, all of the equipment. PPE moving forward, that's key, assuming we can find it to buy. These are the funds able to do this. Now, these are in addition to the other grants that we are applying for with no additional match as well, but it is a true benefit. Now, I know, you know, everybody will say that it is being paid for by the federal government, and they will have to be paid back at some point, but as far as local dollars, this is a huge boost. I mean, it's...
Well, and a million five sounds like a lot of funding, but it really is not.
So, it'll be gone.
No, it will be gone quickly.
And one benefit is, so, those employees that are the most intimately involved in this, dedicated, you know, some of us are passing off our duties on to other people to dedicate our time to this. This will pay our salaries. So, mine, emergency management, health director, the assistant health director, that completely comes out of the county budget. You now get that money back in your county budget. So, there's a lot of benefit to that. Now, obviously, we're doing the work for it, so, I mean, I don't wanna discredit what the others are picking up. You're not getting anything for free.
Right.
We're passing off to others, but it is, that's the federal government's way of saying, "You're dedicating your time to help with this. We're gonna, you know, boost the ability of the county to be able," 'cause some counties are a lot smaller than us, of course, too.
All right. Anybody else or questions? Well, let me say, I appreciate everything that your staff has done, and we've been labeled as, many of our staff is, as essential employees, and this goes without saying, and I will say it here, we've trimmed some areas, we've got some folks working from home that are not at our facilities, but EMS didn't get that luxury, and I'll just leave it at that, okay? They're working every day. And it sounds like we're paying overtime for additional staff, which, by the way, while I'm there, the fire departments are enjoying that. Gonna cause a, an issue there, because many of them are probably gonna be coming to the county saying, "Hey, we like this, that we're not running all these first responder medical calls, that the county's taking care of it now." So, just as a precursor of that meeting, you're gonna hear that, 'cause I've already been called about it. And, but we appreciate all that our staff has done and actually transported, my understanding, folks that have the virus.
Multiple, yes.
But our personnel have maintained safety, and they've not come down with the virus, and so, which is a testament to the PPE and all the things that we're doing, so...
And I will put a plug in there, our local business, not only the funding that you guys have given through general budget and general fund, but I cannot say enough, and you'll start seeing it on social media each week, but I cannot put a plug in enough for our local industry. It's been unbelievable. I mean, even the chain stores that, they are true local businesses, but a lot of people don't think I'm as local, have been instrumental. But then the true, you know, Caldwell County born and bred, it's, we would not, I can promise you, we would not have been able to have the PPE and ability to do what we've done without them, so...
Right. And we can't thank them enough either. And we certainly appreciate, it's been a team effort. So, anyway, so, you need our adoption of this COVID-19 Project Ordinance and Budget Revision. So, do I hear what the pleasure of the board is in adopting that this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the COVID-19 Project Ordinance and Budget Revision, as outlined by Mr. Devenardi here.
All right. Any other discussion or comment? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And have motion carries unanimously. So, thank you again.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Gentlemen. And that leads us to our consent agenda this evening. Mr. Stan Kizer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We ask tonight for your approval of the April 13, 2020 minutes budget revision, DSS Low Income Energy Assistant Funds of $12,499.05. Budget revision for the Health Department WIC Grants, $9,680.45. We ask you pass the Fee Waiver Resolution. Budget revision Valmead EMS Contingency Funds of $43,422. Budget revision Fire Department's Flow Through Funding of $131,000. Budget revision JCPC Discretionary Funding for Caldwell Friends, $915. You approve the JCPC Funding Plan, approve the JCPC Annual Certification. We ask for your approval of Emergency Services Request to Apply for Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program through the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and Bureau of Justice Funding. Point out, no matching funds are required. We ask for a budget revision Animal Control Architect Fees of $50,000. A budget revision, the Sheriff's Department, a replacement of patrol vehicle of $35,000, and your approval of the resolution to cap the tax levy in the proposed game or rescue district.
All right. Hearing the recommendation of the manager?
Mr. Chairman, I was just wondering about this animal control architect fees. I mean, I think the way things are going this year and stuff, are we gonna put $50,000 more dollars into something that we don't even have a capital outlay to the money to build or anything with?
Can I chime in on that?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to, I just want to.
I think he's wanting you to chime in.
Yeah, I want somebody to.
I understand the concern you have. When we first started this project, we set up $100,000 to do architectural fees. We knew that the architect fees would be more than that because it's based on a percentage of the cost of the project. So you can't really set it up and say it's going to be this much money because you don't know until your bids come back how much the project's going to cost. So we started off with $100,000. Well, we've exceeded that a little bit. There's been some surveys and different things. So what this is, is enough to pay off what we owe them. It won't be the entire 50, but it'll pay off the remaining that's owed on it and then it'll just be dormant until the point we decide to pick the project up and move forward again. That was why we, we'd use the money.
How much will we, how much of that 50 will we be spending?
Half of it, maybe?
Okay.
Why don't we just do half of it then? I mean, with as tough as things are right now and as tough as I think they might be, I mean, because I, I mean, I don't think with all the virus and stuff, we're going to be able to build this this year. I mean, it's just, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Well, the money, the money won't be spent except on what we owe already. There won't be any new charges accrued or anything, so it'll just sit there. I don't have the exact amount, so I hesitate, hesitate to tell you exactly how much it would be if you, we'd set the 50 up before we stopped it, that was going to get us a little ways, but then we decided to put it on hold because, you know, obviously the COVID and everything, so.
I'd like to just change that to, we'll, we pay what we owe and hold it flat at that for now.
How about we change it to 30? That'll give me, because I think it's 20-some thousand that the bill is.
Well, we're, we're only going to pay what we owe anyway. So we're not going to pay anymore. We just wanted to have enough in there that we didn't have to come back to you and ask for, you know, $2,000 extra or $3,000 extras because we didn't have all the bills in. But the project, he has been told to stop the project.
If you want to limit it to the exact amount we owe, we probably need to table it and bring it back the next meeting, because I don't, I don't have that number in front of me right now.
We don't have to, we just say that we'll go with whatever the payoff price, payoff price is and just.
Can you not leave it open to what's, what's owed?
Uh, is that permissible to do it that way?
I don't know from a legislative standpoint, you can leave it open ended on the amendment?
Oh.
More of an auditory question, isn't it?
Yeah, I just don't want us to get into, you know, not having done it correctly and getting questioned on it later if.
Is it going to hurt you to table it to June 15?
Might delay his payment a little bit, but, but I think he'll live. I mean, he's, he's, he's getting paid a lot of money for a project that's on hold, so he would probably understand that if we need to do it. We definitely don't want to pay anything out more than what's already been accrued because it may be a while before we pick this project back up.
So you, you basically, we've either got to table it or he needs a figure that you want to give it up to. We can't just say we're going to pay.
How long has he been, how long has he been waiting on his money? I hate to fake him waiting any longer if he's been waiting for a while.
Hmm, I'm not sure.
I know you put it off one time, so.
Right, right.
Are you comfortable with 30?
Probably. I mean, what I could do too, if this, if this helps any, is if you go ahead and do the 50 and then it's the next meeting, I'll come back and whatever's not spent, we'll de-obligate it. I'll bring another action to next meeting to say.
That's fine.
We've got 20,000 left over, whatever.
That'll work.
Because I mean, I don't want to leave money in there for us to spend if we're not going to spend. I agree with that thought process completely, so.
That's fine, let's just do that.
Does that work? Okay.
All right. So we'll leave it as is, but then once you get everything settled, we'll come back and take that out of encumbrance and move it into an expendable category. Any other questions? All right, all in favor, did I get a motion? I'm sorry.
No, I make, I make the motion that we accept a consent agenda as the county manager is presenting.
All right, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. So I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this evening.
So should we adjourn?
All in favor, say aye. 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 Thank you again for attending and watching, and I hope you have a good evening.